My T do.
Well, hello, sir.
Vaporizes out of thin air.
Good. Called the Custer County Board of County Commissioners meeting to order. Left our records show today is March 5th, 2019, at 9:00 a.m. Counselor, would you lead us in the pledge of allegiance, sir? If you will.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate that.
Is this on the tongue? Oh, that's a call.
Yeah. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Press who?
Sorry. Is there a mute button?
You gotta teach us. We would never have found that.
No.
Remember that, Phil. Trying to meet the phone, it is not simple.
That's crazy.
Madam Secretary, would you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Flower.
Here.
Commissioner Cannon.
Here.
Commissioner Prince.
Here.
Attorney Clint Smith.
Present.
And Clerk to the Board Kelly Camper. Present.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate it. Amendments to the agenda.
I do not, sir.
Nor do I.
None here.
I've got a couple of things, but I'll bring them up under Commissioner Items. Audience introductions.
Jackie Bubas from Sentinel.
Dennis Perkard of Recycling.
Welcome. Thank you.
A little live on audience compared to last week.
Talk about marijuana comeback.
Right. Approval of minutes? I don't think we have any. We're all up to date with that, so. Commissioner Items, Commissioner Cannon, would you like to begin?
Sure. Just been working the airport issues. Lots of good things happening. A whole grant process. Good turnout for that. Thanks, Meredith, for jumping in there. That is due on the 15th. We're gonna get a copy into Christie Dune on the 8th. Shouldn't be too hard. Looks like it's gonna be a well-written document, I think, the way it's turning out.
Good.
And let's see. The strategic plan. I just put two ads in the paper for the next two meetings. It'll be out this week and next. For the community meeting, that's the next big meeting, it'll be at the Tonys to have a joint, the community to have input on the rough draft of what they're pulling together and discuss that with Task Force and the community.
At Tonys?
At Tonys.
I had Ranchers Roost in my page in the article.
No, not for the next meeting. It's gonna be a big meeting, so she decided...
March 13th?
Yes. Did you get... Well, we'll have to put up...
No, I haven't been printed yet.
A change, it hadn't been printed yet.
I've got Ranchers Roost.
Yeah, but she decided, I talked to her this morning, it's gonna be a bigger meeting, and so she decided it'd be better at Tonys.
Okay.
Good thing I mentioned that. And putting the ad in the Sentinel, too. And then the second meeting, the last meeting's the final meeting, which will be here in the boardroom, or if we have to, we'll move it. But that's just to review and comment on the actual product and make updates to the final draft. And that's on the 21st, Thursday.
I just want to comment. I went over the draft pretty carefully. I thought you'd tell...
She's doing a great job, I think. Pulling things together. Capturing the things we've talked about, that's for sure. And let's see. I'd like to have a discussion tomorrow, probably might be good, before our meeting with the upper archives. I'd like to talk about the water board idea that I've got to get guys that are gonna be dedicated. And it probably involves the revitalization of the Wet Mountain Valley Water Board, which has been in existence for 35 years, but it's been defunct for more than 10 or 15 years. And they still have a board, a, what do you call it? Charter and a set of bylaws, so I asked to get ahold of those. And you could take a look, and you might be able to modify it, but my idea is to try to get somebody on top of what's happening, be an interface, make sure the upper archives, or whoever, there's other water boards that are popping up all over that we wanna be aware of as a county, that's commissioners that are working for the good of the people. So we can discuss that more tomorrow. And that's enough for now.
Okay.
And we'll put that on the agenda. 24-hour gig. Close.
But how do you wanna phrase that?
It's just this water board discussion. County water board discussion.
Water boarding?
Yeah. Yeah, I haven't done much since our last meeting. Attended a Fair Board meeting on Sunday afternoon, and they are pressing ahead with their strategic plan. We're having a meeting tonight out in Bull Domingo about that as well. So I wanted to discuss Century Link's claim for the $345 that remains that we did not I think, gentlemen, you probably received a copy of this letter from JNR. Counselor, did you also receive? Were you included in that email?
No, I haven't seen anything about it.
Century Link. Well, initially, they turned it over to a collection agency to collect their $3,000 or whatever that original amount was. I can look actually real quick here and tell you.
Yeah, probably.
Were you talking about the damage when they...
Damage on the phone line when they cleaned out the cattle guard.
Okay.
So we paid...
There was never a lawsuit on that?
No.
Because the collection agency wouldn't get... Well, I guess they could.
We... They turned it over to JNR, which looks to me like it's a collection agency. So we paid the portion of the bill that was to cover the cost of the repair, and they had also included $345.12 as an administrative cost. We didn't believe we needed to pay that because we had never received an invoice from them. So on behalf of the commissioners, Jay wrote a letter. We looked at it and sent that along with a check to pay the amount of the damages. And then we get a follow-up letter from JNR that said we still owed them, well, it's actually real Century Link, $345 for an administrative cost. I think our stance was, we didn't believe we owed them that because this, it was the first, we paid the invoice when we got it. And so JNR says, "We have been retained by the above-referenced client," meaning Century Link, "regarding property damage allegedly caused by you. Please provide this office with immediate payment of $345. The other balance has been paid." And I can pull up that check request or the voucher. Oh, crap. Sorry.
But JNR identifies itself as a collection agency, not a law firm that's doing collection work, apparently?
It's not a law firm, is my understanding. It was a collection.
If it's a collection, they have to have a statement at the top that says this is an intent of this letter. Adjustment Company is what it's called.
And it didn't have that side. I don't know who these are.
Yeah, it just says JNR Adjustment Company.
They must be under contract, wouldn't they?
Well, they don't get to add on costs like that?
We didn't think so. Let me see if I can pull that original amount off.
Wonder why we never got a billing from them?
Well, that was a question, if I may, that we really had. You know, my concern was if in fact we didn't receive it, because the question was, it was a long period of time, from time to damage to we paid the bill. My thought was, if we never received a notice that we owed it, we paid it in a timely manner, then we don't owe it. But the question I have, since many of these bills go directly to Roden Bridge, is it possible, and Gary may not even know, is it possible someone there got it and didn't do anything with it? And if that's the case...
Then we're liable.
Then I feel we probably are liable, and we should pay the 345. It's not a lot of money, it's principal to me. But the real question is, if we were delinquent in paying it, that we knew about it, we ought to pay it. If not, I just don't feel... It's not a lot of money, but I just hate to do it.
I know, their administrative costs are when they either tried to rebuild and did follow up, and then they gotta get ahold of somebody to...
But the point really is...
Wouldn't be necessary if we got it in the first place.
Would we notified in a timely manner? If we were, and for whatever reason, if it was a county somewhere along dropped the ball, somebody, then we should pay it. If not, I'm just not, I'm not happy about this. I don't know what we're fighting about, but I just don't see it.
The check voucher was for $2,875.98. That has been paid. We included with that check a letter that basically we said that Custer County challenges all costs beyond the actual repair cost and therefore refutes the extraneous direct administrative cost. Century Link's administrative policies regarding billing are of no concern to Custer County and adding administrative fees to the repair bill is inappropriate. So that's been our communication with them.
We didn't say anything about not receiving it.
I think we did.
Yeah, I didn't read the entire letter.
Did we say we didn't receive it?
Let's see. "For months after the incident, Century Link transmitted its initial invoice in the amount of $3,221.10, delineating the charges of $2,875.98 for repair cost and $345.12 for direct administrative cost." So...
And in that letter, we accepted liability for breaking the line, because I don't think that's really questioned. It was the administrative thing we had issued.
Right. Yeah, Custer County assumes the responsibility for repairing the damage, which we paid for that. So I don't know if you wanna look at this material in reply to JNR as an attorney for the county or...
Yeah, I'd like, I mean, first of all, administrative costs are just their everyday costs to do in business. You know, it's not something separate that they would not have incurred...
Yeah, that's true.
But for this. I mean, it's internal, it's not, if they had hired a lawyer and the lawyer's trying to say, "No, I wanna get," you know, our legal fees were reimbursed, which wouldn't, they wouldn't be able to do that either. But yeah, I would like to take a look.
Should we ask Gary if he found it or if he ever got it?
Well, we asked him when we brought this up during a staff meeting, if he'd ever received any other invoices. He told us, "No." Go ahead.
If I may, and maybe Gary just didn't know. So I would say before we ask a council clerk to take the time to do this, maybe we ought to ask Gary to do an internal investigation, determine, let him ask the people, did anybody receive this? If he comes back and says, "No," then I think it's absolutely appropriate.
Was there any timeframe between when Sherri took over as the admin over there, and they may have dropped that?
I don't know the answer to that, so...
Could've been. Well, a claim against the county needs to go to the commissioners, you know, through the clerk or directly to you. I mean, if they filed a claim to Roden Bridge, it was the wrong procedure.
But they would bill us normally, don't you think?
Well, yeah, if they're gonna send the invoice, they should have sent the invoice directly. If they sent it to Roden Bridge, Roden Bridge, you know, dropped the ball over there.
We don't get every billing for Roden Bridge.
Well, I guess you can have Gary see what he's got over there.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, I sent you those two documents, and then I can research some more after the meeting.
All right, well, let me know what Gary has to say, if he wants to look. How long ago did that happen? Was it last year, sometime August or something?
I guess close that out, yeah, it was last summer.
Yeah, it was, it was like September when the incident occurred and we had to get the bill to...
They thought the line had been rerouted somewhere else.
Well, it's not that long ago. I mean, I could see if this had been, they tried over and over and over again, but I think your response was reasonably prompt.
And don't they usually reference and say, "Because the invoice of this date was not paid..."
And that's why I felt if that was the case...
After many attempts of collecting, you are now remanded to whatever.
Yeah, if that was the case, I wouldn't have fallen paying it, but I don't believe it is. I think we paid it when we got the initial invoice, so we'll pursue that with Roden Bridge this morning when it comes in. And the other thing I had was, I looked at that strategic plan as well, the draft copy I communicated to Cheryl and asked her if she felt like we wanted a actual commissioner's letter of support at the beginning of that document. She said she did, so with consent, I'll work on that if you guys will be...
She gave me a rough draft. I've got one that Joanne's gonna work with, and I'll send it to you, and then we'll come up with what it ought to look like. All, most D plans have the boss saying, "Here's the vision, here's what we wanna do, and here's why."
Okay. That's all I have.
After the meeting on last Thursday, I attended the phone conference, as did you, Mr. Chairman, regarding our incident with the gentleman who's been making a lot of claims. After that, I went to, attended the attainable housing committee. Unfortunately, I didn't have a quorum, but they have some, a wonderful opportunity. They received a $40,000 grant. And the college that has the properties in Silver Cliff, which already have the utilities going to it, the college is interested in selling those at a very nominal cost, maybe $5,000 or so. So I think the attainable housing, once they get a quorum, may vote internally that they would like to purchase those lots with the grant money. And I just mentioned to them that they don't have the authority to approve it, they need to come to us, but once they approve it, then bring it to us, and we'll see if the commissioners concur or not. So I thought that was, I was sorry to hear that they didn't have a quorum, but they were thinking, like, let's get off the, you know, get up and do something, get something going. Unfortunately, you may have received that Tony has resigned from that. And actually, in a lot of ways, I'm somewhat relieved because I was very concerned that there may be a conflict of interest if he was bid on it and somehow won the bids, and he's also on the committee. I graffled with that. I never opened my mouth on that, so when I saw him resign, I kinda said, "Well, fortunately, I think that issue may..."
Bear it down.
On Saturday, I spent quite a long time with our group from, of marijuana growers, as I promised I would do. We went through the agreement that we had in 19 Day Show One, the resolution. First thing they asked me to relate to you, and I told them I would, is that they really apologized for being so late in the game. They said they just had no idea that this was going on. So I told them I appreciated that comment, and I would pass it on. The meeting was very cordial, was very appropriate. I think some of their recommendations are very reasonable. We're meeting again, and they run this by the sheriff. Sheriff was conceptually in favor of this. I wrote up a, just a synopsis of what we discussed, the changes and what would modify 19 Day Show One, how it'd be modified, what changes would take place. That group has it now. We're meeting again Thursday at 4:00 at the Roadhouse again. And Sheriff will be there, and I believe Buck will be there also. He'll be there representing Silver Cliff, he told me. When I spoke to the spokesperson for this group, he told me that what I wrote was, you know, pretty much what they wanted, but we'll hear what they have to say on Thursday. Just kind of a preview, the sheriff and I also think that their recommendations will solve the issue of who can grow, who can't grow, how much can grow, and what isn't being grown within this group than would be outside the purview, and the sheriff will know who it is if it was not. And I think that was the real sheriff's issue.
So it was focused on medical marijuana.
Well, we didn't, if they tried to make a medicine and recreation, I said, "I don't really care. Marijuana's marijuana, as far as I'm concerned. You wanna call medicine, you wanna..."
Yeah, not worried about them. I was just worried about them getting granted bigger space to grow stuff when the recreational guys don't necessarily.
Well, we'll talk about that.
I'm just asking if that's what your discussion is.
That is in the plan, and there is a modification to that. There's a modification to the one acre minimum size because one of the ladies there, and I thought it was fairly appropriate, I'm just kinda jumping the gun, but she said, "I'm poor. I don't, I can't own an acre or rent an acre. I own a smaller lot. Are you telling me I'm discriminated against being able to grow?" And I said, "You know, that's a reasonable suggestion." So anyway, I'll, we'll bring it to you, we'll see what the sheriff has to say, and then we can discuss it again. So that's moving forward. Let's see, what else? I think that takes care of what I've been working on.
Okay.
So we'll get back to, we'll get back to that. I think it's on the agenda for the 29th of this month for hearing, but I'll have, if they come up with an agreement that the sheriff is in favor of also, I'll send it out to everybody, and we can review it ahead of time so we can discuss it.
Was Shannon Byerly at your first meeting?
He was not.
Okay.
They have spoken to him about it, though.
Okay. The claim, she was on board.
Good. Thank you. Appreciate it. Anything else, gentlemen? Attorney items?
I just looked up JNR Adjustment Company, that is a debt collection agency out of Massachusetts, and there isn't any provision that would allow no legal authority, that would allow them to just tack on an additional charge. I did the math, that's 2% of what the amount is that we did pay, the $2,875, so that's where they got that figure from. But I, yeah, I agree, it's not a whole lot, but I think it's an in-house expense that they, if they have somebody in their accounting department working on it, that person would be working on something else using that time. It's, you don't get to charge, pass those bills on to everybody. I don't think we were terribly delinquent, never had to go to litigation or anything.
I don't think we were delinquent at all. I think we paid it.
And then we found out.
So you got an invoice, and you don't suddenly start adding on additional amounts for it. So I would object to it, and if you want me to write a letter to that effect, I can...
We got the perpetrator in here, we need to talk to him.
Okay. Come on, you come out of Roden Bridge, you owe me.
Anything else, sir?
There goes your Christmas.
Yeah, I'm sorry. So the memorandum of understanding that's on the agenda for today with the Saddle Club, I helped a little bit on that. And last Friday, Sheriff Byerly and I went to a task force meeting in Canyon City. It's something you're familiar with, I've talked to you about it, you know, a couple of executive sessions. Nothing remarkable about that. People are still sort of mulling over what action they wanna take, and there's some discussions, but there hadn't been any decision if anybody else is gonna do something. But my plan is still based on what we discussed previously, and what you actually voted on after the last executive session, is that I do plan to go forward with legal action, and when that happens, then I would say at that time, we can go ahead and make it public.
Okay. Perfect. All right, sir. Thank you. Anything else?
That's it for me.
Okay. Administrative assistance? Anything?
That's great. Didn't you do work on a grant?
Oh, yeah. So I worked on...
Two grants.
Two grants. One for the landfill to get a skid steer. That was last, the first was sent today, so we'll hear back in April. And then I'm working on a grant for the airport. Gonna send in the draft on the 8th, and then it'll be due on 15th. A little bit better of a timeframe on that one, so.
Okay. Good, good. Thank you for your work on that. Appreciate it. Public comment? Anything for the good of the order? Okay, we'll move on. Staff reports, landfill and recycling. Good morning, gentlemen. How are we doing? Smartie, how are you?
Good.
See what he ran up here fast to get the only chair?
Yeah, that's right.
Bringing a chair up.
It's embarrassing that the...
How's coming up tomorrow?
One chair, that's right. How are we doing?
Good.
I'll take the money.
Treasure already got it, sorry. You can have it later. Yeah, I wanted to thank Meredith for all of her work on that grant, which was a great, great big help.
We could charge him an administrative fee. Oh, yeah. $345.12. $345.12.
10 cents.
Yeah. That only makes sense.
Yeah. I don't think I had any paperwork from you ahead of time, did we?
Yeah.
We did?
It still looks like this.
Did that come? Did that come through Ms. Meredith? Or not?
I guess, but probably from the grant Friday.
She had, she had two updates on it. I think it was, I don't remember which one it was in. Think it was two.
Thank you. Appreciate it. All right, sir. This is little share.
The...
Twiny on, Rusty.
Groundwater monitoring wells report came back with no impact, which is a great thing. And they should be back today. They called me yesterday and said that they're gonna try to come back up today and do their second quarter sampling. And I'm sure that'll come back, no impact, too. If it does, then they won't sample them again for five years, so.
Nice. Good.
And so I called the engineers on that, or emailed back and forth with them.
Now, your construction permit for new trenches, is that what that's for?
No, it's actually just air pollu, ATAN is Air Pollution Emissions Notice.
Okay.
So every five years, it's a construction permit, basically.
Just to operate, basically.
Right.
Digging.
Right.
Okay.
And we started the financial assurance process, so I have some paperwork for Sam Donardo when he gets here.
So what is an assurance process?
It's financial assurance that we have the muddy, the money to take care of the landfill when it's closed.
I see.
And so we have to do that every year?
You have to show that to who?
Every year, yeah.
Every year down the state. Good.
And a skid steer, of course, you guys know that one.
Sure it's big enough, Rusty. You're not gonna have second thoughts now or anything.
No, it's, it's big enough. We tried it out.
I know, it's still there, isn't it?
No, we took it back.
Took it back, why?
Yeah. So I didn't know how long it was gonna take to be approved, and I'd rather have it sitting on their lot than ours.
Yeah, probably a good idea. I know they were wanting to push it on you.
Couple of months. And we started placing and trashing the new trench, so.
The countdown has begun.
The countdown has begun.
So you, it would break ground, huh, through the ice?
Question?
Go ahead, yeah. Sorry.
It's a new and final trench. What are final makes me nervous? When this is full, where's the new and improved trench gonna be, or do we not know at this point?
It's gonna be the expansion in that draw.
Thought you had a trench planned up above, though.
Yeah, and we could, we could actually put a trench, and we'll see what the engineers come up with, because they know all that information, too. We can put a trench, maybe two up there. And then fill in that draw.
When you said final, you meant car location, not final to the landfill. I'm making me nervous. I thought we had time to get this squared.
How long does it take to fill a trench? How many years? One, two?
They've been going five.
Heaven.
So we better be up and running and...
I would plan for two.
Yeah, if we continue to see growth and increased activity out there, that may go down four years, really.
Yeah, it could go down.
And see, that trench that we just filled up was the longest trench out of all of them. Not a whole lot longer, but it was longer than the rest of them. You know, I said we would get 68,000, 68,000 yards, I think, in that trench and we got 82. So that's, that's a big plus.
Easy's got a bigger weight on it, compactor.
We compact that trash now.
Has your pickup truck arrived yet?
No. And I called them last week and they haven't returned my call, so I might have to slip down there and visit with someone.
Nice sleep visit.
Yeah, right. So, yeah, you can see that the cubic yards does go up every year in these trenches.
And that was in just the one trench, yes, huh?
Right.
Wow.
Each one of those trenches differently?
Well, these figures all went into that trench.
Right.
Well, they were all the same.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's right, I see. Gee, it didn't seem like that was many years.
Four years out of that, five years.
Five years in there.
Yeah. Yeah, I see it.
Amazing how the amount of trash doubled between 2000, almost doubled between 2004 and 2010. That trend continues, we're gonna have to seriously think about where we're going in the future.
Agreed.
So we just need to keep pressing on with the whole permitting process and try to find some money.
And the money.
Right.
Scour away some money because we've got an account started, right, a line item in the budget.
Yeah, they, the engineers said that they would start on the proposal and send us a proposal for the expansion and that money figure will be on that.
And then, of course, we'll have to have money to do the trenches and/or put a dam down at the bottom of the area landfill, right?
Cheapest way to go probably would be just to get that area filled, that, fill that draw first. And then come back to those other trenches on top because that area fill, I mean, it's already a trench.
Right.
Pretty much. Just have to get in there and scrape the topsoil off and if we can get away without having a liner, we are really gonna be in good shape.
Nice.
Save time.
Wonder if we could. And I don't mean this facetiously, the 69 coming in and hump that blocks the view. Talk about leveling it, maybe that dirt could be used for fill.
Where at?
Oh, down here, Rosita Road and Highway 69.
The unity, oh.
Make it more visible, safer.
We had talked to CDO about cutting that hump out of there.
Oh.
For safety. That's just a bunch of dirt, might gonna have to go somewhere if we do.
Maybe 6, 8,000 cubic yards of dirt. Cause we talked about having to put a earthen dam at the bottom end of the area landfill, correct?
Yeah, that'll have to happen.
Be good use of it.
If we can get by without a liner.
Especially if CDO will pay for the removal of the dirt.
Yeah. Cause we can always use dirt. Especially with that area fill.
And without nails.
And you had enough material that was not frozen to cap this F cell?
Yeah, 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 we're sneaking by.
I say capped, covered.
Right. Yeah, those stockpiles are still pretty darn hard, but we're scraping up enough to get cover on it.
Took a while to get that monitor. When did you take it down, Chris? 11:15?
Oh, yeah, I did that last year. That really worked out good getting that monitor calibrated down to Air Gas and Publo because I used to send it back to Industrial Scientific where I bought the monitor. So you send it back to them, you tell them you want the O2 sensor fixed and the monitor calibrated. Well, it'd be cheaper to buy a new one. Took it to Air Gas and they calibrated and fixed the O2 sensor, didn't cost anything. Of course, it was still on warranty, but
well.
Still didn't cost shipping, which was six bucks or whatever it was.
Anything else, sir?
Well, we'll see what Trihydro comes up with this last sample. And then we should be.
Could be the pivotal point, huh?
It's gonna be, uh, then they'll do their final report. They, I got a, the state sent me a report because I called them and asked them if they received a first quarter report. And they didn't, so they emailed me that report. It's lengthy, a lot of analyticals, you know, so.
All right, we'll keep our fingers crossed, huh?
Yes, we will.
Good, okay, sir, thank you. Anything from the recycle?
Not a terrible whole lot. Plastic is, is terrible right now in the country. They're only taking ones and twos, which is milk bottles and
water.
Yeah, that's about all they're taking, everything else is flat or not at all, taken at all. Cardboard is flat.
What about incinerating plastic?
They're doing something like that back east. There's a, I can't remember the county, small county, but they're incinerating everything. They have an actual, uh, and I read the article on it here the other day, but they're not recycling anything, they're just taking it all to the, the incinerator, incinerating it. They have a problem with pollution, of course, uh, because burning plastic is not a good thing. It supposedly is a sanctioned incinerator, supposed to have scrubbers and everything on it.
Multi-million dollar incinerator.
Yeah, we can't justify it here, obviously, but, uh, just flat right now. There's China, uh, not taking anything anymore and they're making it impossible for us to send it to them because you have to itemize every, every type of plastic and we just don't do it. And they won't accept it unless it's pure recycled, uh, and almost all Southeast Asia's that way.
Yeah, screw it, you think we gotta run our lives based on what Southeast Asia does or doesn't want to do.
And, uh, our country's just not stepping up right at the moment.
Well, I think we need to continue to promote, for sure, promote our cardboard recycling, huh?
And it's gonna keep getting bigger.
Get a bigger room to flatten it out in.
Yeah, that's the other thing I've been thinking about is collection site for cardboard.
Which we could come up with an answer for that because all disposals, trucks are down, we didn't have, didn't get cardboard last week.
No, because their trucks are all not DOT.
Oh, really?
So if that, if there was a central collection point in the county, let's say somewhere, close towns, I visualize an open topped semi trailer backed into a dock or pulled alongside of a dock where people could drive up, throw the cardboard in. And then on some frequency, we back trailer or tractor under it, pull it out to the landfill and unload it, well, which could be a problem.
There, there's ideas on how to do that. I mean, we can, we can get a roll-off that can be dumped on it off a trailer about the same size as we're getting right now. Of course, it takes capital, but, uh.
Yeah, I didn't want that roll-off backs into your.
We could back, we could actually just pull it back right into there and we'll take it right off the back of the trailer instead of dumping it. We don't even have to dump it.
Pull it off, put it right into the baler.
And we pull it right off and go right into the baler, it still would have to be hand.
Have to have it covered, you don't want to get it rained in, do you?
Well, that would be great if we could get some, that cover.
Get a live deck in it.
Right now we don't have, they don't cover anything since we deal with the elements, frozen cardboard.
Yeah, but you compact it first before you throw it out there.
So.
One of the things I was concerned about, the whole cardboard thing, was the wind blowing that stuff out of the, uh, out of that trailer or roll-off or whatever it is.
Problem is with, if you have it somewhere, like their yard over there is pretty good because somebody's always watching, not close enough, but they watch. Because people throw their bag trash in the cardboard bins and plastic, all kinds of.
Yeah, that's, that's the, that's the big problem with it, it has to be monitored to a point. I mean, it can't monitor it 100%, but you gotta make them think that it's being monitored because they will throw, fill it full of trash.
Smile, you're on camera.
Once in a while, just put a picture in the newspaper of the trailer.
But it's gonna increase, it's.
Yeah, we, my wife and I have been recycling, we've been holding on to our plastic, we actually haul it to Florence. But our cardboard has just amazed us how much volume two average people have generated in cardboard in 28 days in February and five days in March.
A lot of very cape boxes, Tom.
Well, there's a lot of cardboard, that's for sure. And so then I think, number one, the volume going into the landfill and then the lack of revenue generated by selling that cardboard had I either been hauling to the landfill or burning it. So, uh.
And paper is, is flat too and we still, we, you wouldn't believe how, I, I take down 3,000 pounds of paper to slide every month and week. That's just carpet, pewter paper, magazines, things of that sort.
Wearing my truck.
And it's getting, it's getting even more all the time. It used to go two months, now it's going a month and a half, a month and a week that I'm taking that trailer.
Yeah, I, you know, I don't want to say we gotta be careful, what we ask for, we might get it. I mean, we need that cardboard to be not in the landfill and be in that baler and sitting out there ready to go.
Making a buck.
So, so.
Needs to be. Figure out a way to do that.
And another thing that's going on too is with glass. Coors, for some odd reason, is starting to decline colored glass, so it's gotta go to another place. They're only taking, uh, they're only taking the amber and, uh, so it's gotta, they're having problems, gonna have to get another vendor. At least that's, that's what I was told when I was, we were discussing it over in Chavano. That, uh, seems to be a problem with colored glass now.
Okay, all right, anything else, gentlemen?
That's all I have.
Okay.
For this day.
All right, thank you.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
Good job, boys.
Well, see you guys.
Good luck with the grant, we keep our fingers crossed with that as well.
Yes, we will.
That'll be huge. Thank you. Next item on the agenda, Roden Bridge. We're running a little behind, our apologies. Good morning, sir, how are you?
Good.
I do have Roden Bridge documents in my board packet, two of them.
So Gary, there hasn't been that many complaints, what are you doing?
We were getting snow this winter.
Snow helps.
It really does, it solidifies the roads and it helps most.
And.
Something we didn't have last winter, so that's, that's one of the big differences. But then on the flip side of that is we're, we're dealing with a lot of plugged culverts, the melting snow is freezing them out. That one we cleaned out on 271 a couple of weeks ago, it's frozen up again, so we're gonna have water over the roadway, so. And then I was on 198 Sunday morning and, uh, we've got a culvert up there that's plugged up and it's putting water over the road. Well, it's happening probably in about eight or 10 places throughout the county, so.
It was happening on, uh, sorry, it'll come to me. Hermit Road.
Yeah.
It was running over last week, but.
It's frozen.
What's that, the culvert? Uh, either the culverts are plugged with material or else they're, they're plugged with ice. I got a call over the weekend on a issue up here on Yount Mesa where an individual, and it was mainly because the ditch was full, but, uh, snow was melting so fast and ditch was running full of water. It was putting water in this guy's yard and around his house and his porch, so anyway, I took a backup there and cleaned the ditch out and took care of that situation. But, you know, it's great to have the snow, but it's still creating issues for us, so.
Yeah.
I mean, it's just part of it. I'd rather have the snow in the issues than it for it to be dry and not dealing with the culvert problems, so.
Did you clean one out on Hennequin up on Catalina?
Yeah, we did. Yeah, that's another one that, I was told by Roger that, uh, that creek runs year round and anyway, it, it ice out.
Runs so slow it freezes.
That's what it does.
And it warf load.
Yeah, the cold temperatures at night will freeze them from top, or bottom to top.
Yeah, and it's been awful cold.
Yeah, and it's hard to get them cleaned when that happens. It takes four or five times the amount of time and water to get one cleaned out, so. It's kind of a constant battle this time of year.
The overlay on Hermit Bridge is starting to fall apart on us, isn't it?
It is, I've got some bag patch mix in the, in the shop right now, warming up so we can go out and do some patching on that.
It might be warm enough to do it here this week.
Yeah, that's what I'm hoping, I'm gonna transfer that stuff. Our shop's only about 60 degrees, but I'm gonna transfer it into our break room and get it a little bit warmer and see what we can do with those spots. And we've got some more potholes in various, you know, parts of the county on that chip, so we've gotta get some of them taken care of.
Any maintenance problems?
Uh, maintenance is, what's that?
Any, it just, you're taking advantage of the time, I'm just wondering if you're running across any problem, issues on machines?
No, we had one transmission rebuild that I'm sure you guys seen the invoice for. Byron caught that fortunately before the transmission went completely out, he pulled the filter and was doing a fluid change on it and, uh, found foreign material in the filter and between us and Wagner, we determined what the problem was and it was internal in the transmission, so. Anyway, um, I was a little shocked when I seen the bill for the rebuild on it, but I guess it's better than a new transmission, which.
What was it in?
Uh, it was in one of the older 140Gs that we got, Cat Motorator. But, uh, the problem we're running into on those is trying to find parts for them, so as the machines get older, the parts are gonna increase in price because of availability and it's, you can't even buy a new transmission anymore. And if you could, it would run about $40,000, so that's the downside in the running the older equipment, so, I mean, in some ways it saves money versus the new stuff, but when a transmission.
No such thing as a free lunch, Gary.
Exactly.
Good, uh, we would like you to go back and kind of do a little research and see if we'd gotten any other invoices from Century Link on that cattle guard repair. You had told us earlier that you weren't aware of any. As we spoke to Clint earlier, that we got a notice from a collection agency that they're wanting to collect their direct administrative costs for that. I don't, I think, we don't believe there should be any because we paid the first invoice that we were made aware of. If we'd received any prior invoices that came through your office, we'd like to know that.
Yeah, and there were none. In fact, I checked with JNR and I checked with Century Link and they said, no, this is the only one.
They only sent one out and they're billing us like that?
Yeah, that was the only one.
That's crazy.
There's a Yiddish term, the, this Boobas may know called chutzpah. Chutzpah is German for.
You got a lot of nerve.
You got a lot of nerve.
You got a lot of nerve.
I know, I was.
That's just wrong.
Yeah, that's my point.
They gave us one invoice and it was late and so they charged us an administrative fee and referred it to a, a collection agency, come on.
You can use chutzpah if you'd like to.
You know, really, in, in the.
In quotes.
In the scheme of things, I don't believe Century Link is charging us that, that's a JNR charge.
That's right, they referred it to their collectors.
JNR higher than us, their problem, not mine.
That's right.
So you're pretty confident we received one invoice and that's the invoice we used to pay the bill?
Yeah, that's what I was told by both JNR and what I saw come through our office.
You guys always, you get invoices all the time and you put them in the system and get them paid timely by us.
Right.
I mean, there's no. You've got a process.
Yeah, the mail gets picked up by the admin assistant. She goes through it, then the invoices get voucher'd out, they come across my desk and and I was, you know, I wanted to make sure and do my homework, make sure that we didn't have any others come through, so. That's why I got hold of JNR and I asked them and then I asked Century Link. Their office personnel, I said, no, it's been sent out, so.
That's like a new tax, you know, they could do that on every invoice, you know, I'm just going to give you an administrative fee and we're billing you.
Yeah, and that's, I mean, it's 20%.
You have to short them. Yeah, that's right, we'll get our own administrative costs right back in.
Well, I'm not paying for that until council advises to do that, I just.
He's taking copious notes, I've noticed.
We got our answer here today and I think that maybe we ask council to move forward with that. It's not about the $345 for me, and I know you've said the same thing. You've indicated the same thing, it's process and concept, I just don't agree with it, so.
It's a significant amount.
Cause the bill's been paid, the repair bill, we paid that, $2,800, so.
And we paid that as soon as we got. We didn't waste any time paying that.
And then the other thing I wanted to bring up, and it's on our agenda, but you, you'll probably be gone by then, and that is we've written a memorandum of understanding with the saddle club to get our verbal agreements on paper about the repayment of the water bill.
Okay.
So, when that's, we'll consider that today and then I'll send you a copy of that as well. We just felt like we needed something on paper versus what we just talked about.
It's not a good idea.
Yeah, and then there's a record on that MOU of the money that has been paid in the balance, remaining balance, so.
Okay.
I'll shoot you a copy of that. Good, what else, sir?
So Jeff Othea called me recently and he talked about South Hardscrabble, 386 North Bill Donnelly's going back west. And it's County Road for about 1.7 miles approximately. Anyway, it's a consideration for Forest Service to open that back up to the public beyond the gates up to where the Forest Service property is.
Just that top end or the bottom?
Bottom and top, both.
It's, yeah, he didn't, he didn't mention.
But the big concern is the bottom.
Yeah, I think so, but anyway, he wanted to know if Rooding Bridge would go back to maintaining that. And I told him that I'd visit with you folks about it. On our end, it requires very little maintenance, so it's not a big deal.
And we are in a, in a written agreement with them, Schedule 1A, that we get paid to maintain those roads from the Forest Service, so.
And you got a greater down at the bottom end anyway.
Yeah, it's not very far from there, so, I mean, it could go up 387 and jump on there and do that work, but. Yeah, and then there's the snow removal in the wintertime. I, I guess the gates are left open in the winter.
I don't know, it's a good question.
Yeah, I had a conversation with Othea about this whole thing, I did not, we did not talk about the wintertime.
Yeah, I don't know if they close them, I know some of them get closed, you know, in various places like. Well, I know Over, Over Creek gets closed.
They probably close it because you're running a risk, you guys get up there and get stuck in a.
Some places they leave open to a certain degree so that snowmobile, snowmobilers can use it, but.
You have to ask them what he intends.
But anyway, I don't think it'd require much on our part.
I'll shoot him an email right now and ask him about that. So you, on the surface anyway, don't have a big issue about going back to maintaining the top and bottom end of that?
No, and then I talked to Larry and Kevin and got their thoughts and they didn't have a problem with it either, so. And he said it's not a damn deal, anyway, it's in preliminary stages to possibly open it back up.
Yeah, and he was hoping for us to be able to make a decision at our March 29 meeting. I'll ask him about keeping it open year round or just maintaining it during the summer. And then hopefully we'll, well, I think it's already, I think I've requested that to be on the agenda, but if not, I will, the decision, consideration of that request from the Forest Service and they were, he was going to try to give us some more information and. So if you want to be part of that conversation on the 29th, you'd be more than welcome to come here. Then I'll get an answer about snow removal.
And the plane got landed at airport just fine and took.
Did they get in?
Yeah, I went down there, checked the runway once it got cleared and it looked safe to me and then.
I was surprised it came in, it was so crappy weather, visibility.
Pretty good sized plane.
Dave wants.
No, it was somebody from another state wanted to land here and was trying to check what the weather was, called. Was the airport open and so, he's called in, wanting to land. Had to delay him a couple of hours.
Yeah. And then Dave Tongzing got ahold of me here a few weeks ago, about two weeks ago, 10 AM. And he had kind of an unusual question for me and it had to do with an insurance services offices rating for the county, it has to do with homeowners insurance and a rating. And what his question was, is because of some things that they were taking care of paperwork wise for the insurance offices, if it would be a possibility to borrow one of our water trucks and park in their firehouse for eight weeks or so. And in doing this, it would help to lower the ISO rating for homeowners within five mile of driving distance from the firehouse, like one of them's Rosewood, Rosita Road, the other one's Boneyard Park.
Why, why eight weeks only?
Because in the meantime, in that eight week period, they're going to be on the hunt for a tender of their own to permanently park in that firehouse.
Cause it's just alone until they acquire their own?
Exactly.
It's one time deal.
It's a one time deal and then what it involves in is, is they, it get parked there and then it, it would be highly unlikely that it would be needed for a fire run, but if it was, it would, it'd have to be a Rooding Bridge Department employee that drove that truck. It couldn't be anybody else, like with the fire department or whatever. So anyway, go ahead, Jay.
I'm sorry to interrupt your podcast, would, would that be taking a water tender out of service that you would be using?
Well, and that's the thing I told Tongzing, I said, the only reason it would be a consideration is because of the time of year that it is and the lack of demand on our water trucks.
When did they want it?
Uh, as soon as they could get it, honestly.
Like now?
And I said, if it should happen to be requested later on in the summer or spring or whatever, I said, it's not even a consideration, we're, we're using them too much, so. I said, this is something that I would have to take in front of the board and present for you folks and get your thoughts on it.
Are you interested in paying for this or is it something we're doing for free?
Who is it exactly? I know it's Townsend, but for what?
It's for, in fact, I, I had Dave send this to me, he said, you folks have got some specifics on this, so. Just kind of briefly outlining what, what he was talking about.
So it's temporary for the Silver Cliff and Rooding Bridge?
Well, I guess Silver Cliff, they have two different firehouses that need the tender temporarily and Silver Cliff is going to donate one for this eight week period or whatever it's going to be.
Oh, I see.
You know, yeah. And because of conflict of interest, because of my geographic location from the Rosita Firehouse, I, I don't want to. I want to, what I will do is present the details, the specifics, but see, I live within a five mile driven radius of that Rosita Firehouse, so I don't think that I should have an opinion one way or the other, because it would affect my insurance.
So who's buying the water truck, the fire department?
I guess so.
Okay, so it's a request for us as a county to help the fire department out?
Yeah, to get this pushed through and it sounds like they've got a deadline to get it down or else it's, it's just going to go away.
And if we don't do it, it just is a matter of cost, is that what it is?
A cost as, oh, for the insurance rates, instead of going down, they'll just stay where they're at.
So, but they would go down in eight months from now, once they get a, a water truck of their own, is that?
Well, actually, I, I think they reflect this decrease in costs almost immediately.
So, we're just talking about lowering the cost for everybody for eight months?
Well, from here on out, actually, because once they get this tender.
Yeah, but once they get it themselves, but I'm just trying to get a feel for what we're being asked.
Exactly.
And it's not changing.
Eight weeks or eight months?
Eight weeks that it would take for them to get a truck located.
So it's a very short term.
Yeah, it's short term, because it would, and it would have to be because, you know, once the eight weeks is up, we're going to start using those water trucks, or that one water truck.
So it changes everybody's insurance policy costs?
Within a five mile driven radius of that firehouse.
We're helping out the citizens here if we do it.
Well, in essence, yeah, the end result would be.
Sure.
Can Mr. Prince comment?
I do, but I first want to say on the record, I believe I live within five miles of their station, so.
We can't listen to you either.
That's a concern for me. That's a concern for me. But let me give you some thoughts and, you know, I just want to put on the record that I'm hearing, I heard prior to this meeting that there was a request for tenders. I didn't realize it was for a very short term period. I was under the impression it was going to be on a permanent basis and I had a negative connotation to that because I thought, we have a Rooding Bridge we need to worry about, fire department just got a new mill levy, you know, they need to solve their own problem, but I'm hearing now that that's exactly what they want to do, they just want to borrow us till they're able to, to accomplish that. But I guess my question is, these are the kind of things that they say, you know, we're going to do it for eight weeks and, you know, 12 weeks down the road, where's your water tender? And I go, oh, well, we're still very search, we haven't found the right one. That's the kind of thing I'm concerned about, so just throw it on the table. And maybe, maybe I shouldn't even be saying I'm in favor of this because it does affect me directly. But I have, I'm not opposed to this, but I would like to say that the end of eight weeks, there'll be a cost of X amount of dollars, or at the end of eight weeks, we have a written agreement that says, you're going to take your water holder away. I'm just concerned that this is going to be a long-term process.
Or if you have to have the truck, you got to have it, you can't not do your Rooding Bridge job.
Exactly, there would have to be a deadline or I wouldn't, I wouldn't.
Written deadline.
Yes, exactly.
What I would suggest, if this is something you want to do, is we have a short-term IGA, intergovernmental agreement. That makes it very clear what date, because they want it right away, as soon as we get something agreed to and have a definite date that it'll terminate.
Can you do it between now and tomorrow?
I can.
And honestly, my thoughts were, if you folks were in favor of this or were wanting to go ahead with it, I, I'm not real fond of the idea of one of our new water trucks sitting off in the distance away from our home location, so. What I would do is I'd take one of our new ones down here to Wetmore and grab their old hand me down and park that in there. And if it fit. It wouldn't fit in Rosita without modifying the stack on it, it would have to be cut down about five or six inches.
On the old truck?
Yeah, because of the height that the door on the building, we're 10 foot 5 inch on our exhaust on freightliner water truck that's down at Wetmore. The only other thing a person could do is, it's got a taller door in Boneyard Park. We could park it over there and, yeah, put the Silver Cliff water truck in. No, I'm not in favor of modifying our truck.
And so you're thinking this would be at the Rosita station, not Boneyard, is that correct?
Yeah, because of the height of the door, it would be in Boneyard and not Rosita. Now, there is an advantage in it being in Boneyard because one of our employees lives like a mile and a half from that Boneyard firehouse, so. And I think he would be agreeable to operating that truck should there happen to be a fire, a structure fire in that eight week period, so.
Well, I'm not in favor of it at all. I get it that the fire department's making a run at us for the benefit of the citizens. This isn't a county issue, this is a fire department issue. In my opinion, I think, as Commissioner Prince just said, they just got a mill levy for the taxpayers of this county to pay to supposedly increase the services to the county, so. Put your money where your mouth is, here's a chance for you to increase your services as a fire department to the county, so go out and find a tender and park it.
Having said that, Tom, my thoughts were, you know, I'm trying to see both sides of this. You know, if they've got the funds, they, this time of year, water trucks are not in big demand from places like Wagner and these rental companies. You know, there's always the possibility they can rent one too, so, and that would leave us out of the picture and they'd still, still get what they needed, so.
It's an excellent point, I mean, they could just go lease one until they can finally purchase what they need to.
They sure could.
That hadn't crossed my mind, but it's.
So anyway, I just thought I'd throw that.
Yeah, I just, I just don't think I could support this myself.
I tend to agree with you, Tom, but I'd hate to be asking the fire department for a favor in the future. And I look at it from a point of view of the taxpayers already spent the money and they should be ponying up and getting the right equipment. And here's an opportunity for the county to help the taxpayer. Cause if they go rent it, they're going to waste some of the money they would use. I don't know why they, they should have had it lined up in the first place to get it done immediately, why didn't they do that in the first place?
I, I just don't believe it's a county responsibility to help the taxpayer with their insurance rate when it comes to fire. It's what the fire department for. So, my two cents is.
But on the other hand, our, our, our charge is to help the citizens of this county. There's multiple ways of helping citizens of this county, one of them I could look at. We have a direct impact on their insurance cost, that's positive for our constituency. My feeling is, if it's not any hardship on Rooding Bridge, my feeling is that if it's parked at Wetmore, if it's parked at Boneyard, provided that if Rooding Bridge needs it, it is performing a service to our citizens. It is giving the fire department an opportunity to do what they need to do on a very short-term basis. We often swap things between different agencies in the county. Now, I recognize the fire department's a semi taxing interest, but you loan trucks to, to the landfill and, you know, these kind of things happen all the time for the benefit of the citizens. So I'm not quite as staunch as you are, Mr. Chairman, I, I could support this on a short-term basis, provided it has no negative impact on our Rooding Bridge.
Well, what do we want to do? We have to vote on this now or are we going to, what are we going to do?
It's not an agenda item, so we shouldn't be voting on it today.
We ought to talk about it.
We shouldn't vote on it tomorrow because we're waiting for 24 hour notice.
Although, what is their deadline? When do they have to, when do they need to do this?
Without talking to Dave Tongzing, I'm not sure.
Cause we don't know if it could wait till the next meeting or if it needs to be done.
Yeah, I'm not sure without.
Well, if you, yeah, we don't need to jump through hoops here, I don't think.
Well, I understand, I understand, but there is a provision that if something needs to be done for legitimate reasons, we have a right to go off and make a vote separate to that. I don't feel this is going to have any great impact either way, whether we do it or don't do it, but I think. I, I'm just, short-term, if their agency feels it makes sense to them, I'm not opposed to it.
I would guess it would be the fire department coming to us to make a request. With your blessing or without your blessing, I don't know how that works, I don't know that.
I really care what you tell me, I mean, that's, I, I, they can come make their request, but I want you to, I mean, and you've said it, I'm, I'm just saying, my rationale is that your feeling is short-term, you could live without it.
I could, and. I could, and that's not an exaggeration of the truth, I mean, it's just basically because of the time of the year. You know, if I, if I'd had to do it all over again, as soon as he approached me, I would've just directed him towards the commissioners and said, go talk to them, you know, this is, this is-
That's his problem, he oughta be here.
Yeah, I wished I'd have done that, because I mean, I-
Or shit should've been-
Honestly, I've got enough to worry about without taking something like this on.
But I'll tell you what, if his example is right, I mean, it's a thousand dollars a year difference, that's a couple hundred a month.
Well, that was four.
That's a rancher.
Some, somewhere in Southern Colorado doesn't-
So, I don't know what the impact totally is, but it's probably significant.
Yeah.
Anyway.
I just, again, I stated it.
It's up to you, I mean, whether you call for a vote or whether you just-
I, I don't feel comfortable voting on it today, because it wasn't on the agenda.
I think that's fine.
So, if they-
I'd get them in here.
I would say that they probably need to call and request to be on the agenda, if that's what they want to do, come in, present the case, and we go from there.
Right.
I agree.
But it would be, your intent that it would be parked at Rosita?
No, because of, uh-
I mean, because of the stack are not fitting?
Yeah.
So, where would it be parked then?
The firehouse on County Road 265, which is Boneyard.
They gave both as an option that would be viable, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, and because of the height that the door over there.
Well, my reason for asking is because Jay was gonna disqualify himself from voting if it was-
Once I heard it was going to Boneyard, I felt it was okay.
Because then I see sort of, you know, one and one, and, you know, an extension and-
If, if you disagree-
No, 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 that's fine.
Since it moved away from where it affected me directly, I felt it was okay.
So, I don't see that, I don't see where you'd have to disqualify yourself from voting on it, that's what I'm saying.
Go, go talk to them, Gary, and come back. Latest they can do it would be, what, that Wetmore meeting, or are we going to Wetmore this month?
Yeah, yeah, good idea.
20th again, I think, is that?
So, that's 10 days away.
And in the future, if something like this comes up again, I'm just gonna direct it to the government.
We're not throwing you under the bus, Gary. You know, we have concerns.
Sure, and I-
You're taking this on.
Well, you would've had to have been a witness to, to verify you couldn't get rid of the truck anyway.
So, that's what I-
So, that's okay.
Well, certainly, we wouldn't have done it without the input, so.
That's right.
Correct, yeah.
You'd've been involved one way or the other.
At a different capacity, though.
And, yeah, we do meet in Wetmore on the 20th at 9 o'clock.
Okay.
The other thing I wanted to run by you, if you don't mind, real quick, I would like to request that these two sheriff vehicles, once the sheriff's department has pulled the radios out of them, that we could send them to the shop down at Road and Bridge and have the decals and whatever, the light bars, whatever else taken off of those, so that we can move those down to the airport.
True.
Is that a problem?
Who takes radios out, Shannon or?
Shannon's gonna, his people will take the radios out.
That's what I thought.
So, I don't know if there's any cages in there, I, I looked at the vehicles, but I didn't really pay attention. So, if that would be reasonable request from you, or to you from us.
Check them out while you got them.
Pardon?
Check the vehicles out while you got them, make sure.
Yeah, I'll mention that to the mechanic.
They should, they should be.
Okay, yeah, and report to me on any issues they may find with them, so.
Good, yeah, so I, we will follow up with Shannon Barley and have him let us know when the radios are out, and then we'll holler and we'll get them down there, hopefully before everybody gets busy this spring and summer.
It's gonna be real busy this spring and summer, we've got a lot of, a lot of work planned.
Okay, well, hopefully, maybe in the next couple of weeks, we can get that done, I'll lean on the sheriff.
Yeah, that'd be a good time of year to do it, before spring, I don't worry about it, so.
Good, anything else?
Not for me, no.
Gentlemen, okay, sir, thank you, appreciate you coming in. Have a great day.
Thanks, Gary.
You guys too.
You bet.
Take care.
Folks, would you tolerate about a three-minute bathroom break?
She knows, I don't care.
Stay right where you are.
It's not for your benefit, it's for their benefit.
Well, I don't know, they're talking about it, I'm gonna go, but-
With general consent, then we'll be in recess for three minutes. Hold the meeting back to order and we'll move on. Commissioner Order will come back, Commissioner Meeting will come back to order, next item of business, staff report from Department of Human Services.
Oh, boy, oh, there.
How's that?
The weather down here is better than up there.
Or is it?
Yes, I decided you didn't know that, you know.
There's not as much oxygen up high.
Well, that could be, I don't know.
How are you?
I'm okay.
Good.
I'm all right, we're hanging in there.
Good, good.
We're getting our new caseworker on April 1st.
Nice.
So, we're getting ready for that, we're trying to figure out stuff, yeah, yes, and she was the person I just saw, so, I needed her to sign something, so that worked out great, yeah.
Well, and I had offered yesterday to help them if they need some partitions built or whatever in there to accommodate another office, so we'll see how that all goes.
When does she start?
April 1st.
She's graduating college, towards the end of this month, that's why.
Seventeen.
Weeks, yeah.
Yeah, and then she'll have the degree, and then, so that works great, and then we'll start her around April 1st, going to all of the training that we require and steps, though it's just gonna, it's flowing, so, if she's here, and she's, yeah, so, yeah, we're excited, she's excited, so, we're hoping, 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 hoping. And then, yeah, and sometime today, Tom, we want to talk to you about that wall, Stacy's wall.
The hole.
Yeah, I don't know, I think that needs to be, I do, but we'll, we'll talk about it.
Get out of that conversation.
I know, okay, so, here we are with this first one.
Yes.
And that's just, I mean, we're starting in January, and so, everything is just fine and dandy, so, not too much to talk about on there, but it's, but it's there, if you have any questions or anything. And we had to go through and change all of the dates and everything, and I'm like, gosh, I hope I didn't miss any of them, and then I went and changed one of them, I'm like, oh, no, that one stays, because we're not in that year, so, anyhow. You guys, you're bad.
Well, she was late coming in, so she missed it.
I know, I had to show my, they sent me a picture of my grandson in his pajamas with his big old football helmet on with a football, and he's running and he's getting ready to go, he's two, you know, so you have to look at those things when they come down.
Right.
So, and then, okay, and then old age pension, we're staying about the same, you guys can't tell, because we're in a new year, so we really don't, LEAP is the one, is one of the ones where we, we did November, December, and then-
Right.
Pulled it back up for January. We had our, February, you'll show more, because that'll be our second payment for some people, so that'll be a bigger payment out there. We've been statewide, they've been down on LEAP applications, and, and we're seeing, we haven't had as many as we did last year at this time, when I was doing these reports and Rhonda and I were talking about it, um, they're sending out cards statewide to people who were on last year that haven't applied, to remind them to come in to apply. We also, Rhonda went through and looked at some of the people that usually do and sent them out a notice, so, we'll see what happens. And you would think, because this has been a cold winter with a lot of snow, we expected to have more in than, but we had a gal came in yesterday and wanted to know when her LEAP was gonna kick in, and I'm thinking, I don't remember you applying, and we looked and she hadn't applied, and she goes, yes, I did, and we said, no, you applied last year, and she goes, well, I could've sworn I brought that in, well, no, you didn't, so here, fill this out and get it back to us, so, stuff like that.
And employment figures, do they drive any of this at all, I mean, unemployment figures as a case study?
Well, like in the wintertime, we see more, for food benefits and that type of stuff, we see more people in, because they're not able to work as much because of the weather. So, we have some people come in that we see in the wintertime that drop off in the summertime, so we do see that. And what we're seeing is a very strange thing, we get calls from people that are moving here all the time, I just moved here and I'm looking for work, and I don't have a place to live, and I'm just like, I don't know why you-
Geez, they need to think about that before they get here.
This is what I think, you know?
Crazy.
It's not what I do, I-
Why do they come there?
I know, I, I just, I just don't understand it, so, but anyhow, we're dealing with that.
Hey, that Medicaid transportation, um, do you get a lot of that?
We get a fair amount of them, and that's anybody that-
Where's it go, from here to where, just locally, or do you-
No, Canyon, Pueblo.
Is that right?
Yeah, Slida, Florence, um, we even go Colorado Springs.
Somebody asked me about that.
Yeah, we'll go to, you know, we don't do it, but if they have to go to any place where Medicaid will pay, we don't go out of state, obviously, Medicaid doesn't pay out of state, but any place in the state that they're going for medical treatment that Medicaid will pay, we can reimburse them for that.
Okay, so they do it and you, they get reimbursed?
They, yeah, no, no.
You have the forms to fill, so I can direct them to you.
Oh, yes, they come in, they fill out a form, we get all of this information, Rotary uses it, if Rotary takes people down that are going to doctors, then we reimburse-
That's the best way to do it.
Yeah, and then we reimburse Rotary, and so, it's, it's a win situation for Rotary, and it's a win situation for these people, and so, but yeah, some months we have more, some months we don't have as many, it just depends, but yeah, so, yeah.
Is that a budget line, or is that a grant?
It's, it's actually just a pass-through, we don't budget for, I budget for it just in case it takes a while to get-
Do they limit you to the 800 bucks, or if it goes over, you get it?
We get it, yes.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we just, because it's, it's just a pass-through, we pay it out, and then we send in reimbursement, and they reimburse it, reimburse it for us. We've got a new system, which is really nice, wasn't so much when they were bringing it up, but anyhow, we can actually, if we're not sure if Medicaid's gonna actually reimburse us for that, we'll submit it before we write the check, so that we know that we're gonna get reimbursed, because sometimes that would happen, we would think that we're gonna get reimbursed, and then, then there would be some crazy little thing, and Medicaid wouldn't reimburse us. Well, now, we can submit it to them for reimbursement ahead of time, then we know, and then we can write the check, so, we shouldn't see a, a problem with that, but I do budget some in there, just in case something happens along the line.
It's good to know.
Because we want to make sure we've got something in there. When we transfer to the new system, we had a few months where nobody was getting paid, doctors weren't getting paid, hospitals weren't getting, so, yeah, so, but it's working now, so, it's good. And then our-
If you don't pay century, we'll come back.
Oh, okay.
We had a little problem with that earlier.
I'll bet, yeah, I'll bet, okay. And CSVG, I just got some new money, they're hoping to get more, because that's our allocation for right now, but we'll see, she was up in February and did a review and said that they're hoping to get, they should get more money, and then they'll pass it on to us, so, we'll see what happens with that. I used all, I had, I think, close to 7,000 last year, and we used all but like a hundred, couple hundred dollars on it, so, and that's the one we use for grant and utilities and stuff like that. And Energy Outreach Colorado, that's our grant that I put in, and we're still plugging along with that, so, there's nothing there, and we don't, we don't contribute anything to that, that's just total, and I have my paper upside down here, I think. Oh, I snapped it together, Rhonda, she people don't care, but, okay, and then the food assistance, since it's a new month, a new year, we're just pretty much the same, no problems there, and then T-FAB, we're, we're not getting a whole lot of product right now, winter months, I guess, I don't know, but, I don't know, I don't know what determines what they get and where it comes from and how, but they wanted to bring fresh milk, and I'm like, we can't move fresh milk in that short period of time, and I don't have enough refrigeration to do that anyhow, so, that's what I have, I don't have any major things going on right now, thank you, that would be nice. There are something with the daycare allocation, and that seems to be a big deal, although not for us, some of the small counties, larger counties are losing funds, and they're going to the small counties, which has kind of got some people up in arms, but it's, they're just redoing it, and, and so, there, we have stuff going back and forth, and so, I'm not sure what they're gonna do with it yet, so, but it's really not gonna affect us that much, so, we're okay on that, so. Aside of that, I don't have anything that's gonna knock us off of, off of our rockers here, okay? Anybody have any questions, then I'll get out of here.
All right, thank you, appreciate it.
All right, thank you.
Oh, gee, look at that, I'm excited about that.
Thanks, Laura.
All right, see you guys later.
Plug that hole up, Laura.
Well, it's, it's plugged, yeah, it's plugged, yeah.
We repaired it.
We repaired it.
All right, I'll come down, thank you.
Yeah, just in a minute.
Next item of business, IT, hello, sir, how are you?
Good morning, sir. Burngo, you look like a French artist today, tall French artist.
Wait till I start wearing my kilt, then we'll have to reevaluate that.
I'll be worried about that.
We had our previous maintenance gentleman used to wear kilt-
Yes, yes, indeed.
-and bagpipes, he was very cool.
Yes, indeed.
Not at a commissioner's meeting, no.
I, I, I don't-
He left his bagpipes at home.
I don't wear the, the tartans, I wear American-made kilts, utility kilts, solid black, that type of thing, you can tell a kilt, that type of thing, so, yeah. I even have a digital camouflage one that I made myself. It was supposed to be for playing paintball, but it turned out to be too nice, so I did it.
Getting to Wonder Party now.
How's things in the IT world, just random thought?
Right, oh, what an interesting idea, scaffery.
Got your artwork figured out, thanks, Mary.
Um, it's been a, a fairly uneventful month, did do some major computer replacement in the treasurer's office, one thing that I didn't put down there, and the project's completed, was establishing a new Wi-Fi system for the sheriff, and, let's see, oh, I did get the in-cartel system installed. The in-cartel system is a pretty cool little system that we installed over there at the sheriff's office, that allows inmates' families to purchase things for them, or they can put it in a request, and they can purchase things like candy bars and stuff like that, and it doesn't cost us any money that goes through this in-cartel system, oh, and the video visitation as well, so that we don't have visitors going in, there will be video visitation that they pay for and establish, and-
So, they can call in from anywhere.
Exactly, exactly, it's a nice system, we got that installed, and it's, it seems to be working well.
Who paid for the system?
I believe, from what I heard, the system pays for itself through their usage, I don't think that there was an install-
I know the users pay for it, so there wasn't an install fee, okay, thanks, but I was wondering.
Um, that was basically, my side of it was to run cabling and whatnot, and give them the proper ports in our, in the, um, in the router system, so. Ongoing projects right now, still working on the high-speed wireless to the SAR and the VSO, that should be done by the end of this next week, high-speed internet to the, to the clinic, that hit a snag, because I went in to hook it up and nothing is labeled, it took me four hours to find where I can actually, yes, it was, it was quite interesting, none of their ports were labeled, 100, 200 data ports, and none, a single one was labeled, plug-in, no, plug-in, no, didn't work, it was fun, that should be done by the end of this week, though. Uh, computer replacement for the assessor's office, five new computers that he bought last year, I'll be installing those over the next three months or so, excuse me, and then, as I've talked about before, the replacement for Windows 7, just putting Windows 10 on everybody's computer, and possibly replacing more computers in other locations. That's about it, the future projects, we've talked about, I've actually started gathering data points for the, the Justice Center IT infrastructure, what we'll need for that, and I've heard about the possibility of grants for new IT infrastructure, it's gonna be interesting, it's gonna be five years down the road, technology will be different, but I don't think Cat 5 cables are changing much. The work that we are doing with the high-speed wireless, though, is gonna be essential, because the, a lot of, a lot of the systems are gonna be on a wireless network, and so, we'll be able to adapt what we've learned from this process over to the new ones, so, that's, that's where I'm at right now. I'm gonna head out to the airport today, right after we're done here, and work on that project that we talked about with the camera, and that's where I'm at right now, yes, sir.
Remind me of the camera project.
Uh, the, the camera out at the airport is sending data to the wrong place now, there's a server changeover, I need to change the address that it sends the data to.
Can't see it on the website.
Yeah.
They did, and it ended up defunct.
Okay, somebody gonna meet you there, or?
I have, I have keys and codes, so. I have, I have keys and codes, so.
Um, forgive me, I was looking for your documents, so I may have missed this, but, uh, high speed to the clinic.
High speed to the clinic is in process, um, that was the, uh, that was the issue that not, there were no labels on, on data ports. So I had to wait until there weren't people there so that I could unplug computer lines and, and test where the data was flowing, but it'll be done by the end of this week.
So, in essence, then, we would be, the county would be supplying the clinic with-
High-speed internet, yes.
Broadband capability.
Yes.
At no charge, for right now.
Right. I, I don't have control over, over how that is distributed. I do have, I have put a, uh, I have programmed in a, uh, speed limit so that they don't, so that their data doesn't drag us down, but they'll, they'll still, Virgo just suicided into a no. Um, so that they won't drag us down, but they'll still have about ten times the speed that they're using right now.
The CenturyLink charges them, they, they charge us a fee, you know, they-
Uh, for, so our high-speed internet, um, costs in the neighborhood of, of a thousand dollars a month right now. Um, the clinic, because of the, the, the brokerage, that, uh, the brokerage firm that they signed a contract with many, 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 many years ago, before even the previous administration worked there, actually charges them six hundred dollars a month for four megabytes up and four megabytes down. Half of, I know, it's, 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 it's a, it's a rape. Half of, and in, on top of that, they're actually charged a subscription fee to this brokerage company. I know, uh, it's, I don't understand it.
They get out of it.
They are out of it as of June. That, it expires. Now, half of that is supposed to be paid for by grants, so the out-of-pocket outlay is somewhere in the neighborhood of four hundred and thirty dollars, or three hundred and forty dollars a month, excuse me, for the clinic. However, the grant people decided that it was a horrible deal and they stopped paying and now, and now, the company is now suing the clinic for that, uh, that cost that was not paid for by the grants. So, they are in a position where they, they desperately need this, so.
So I wanna make clear that we're talking two entities over there, public health, which is our responsibility-
Mm-hmm.
...and the clinic-
Right.
...which is a totally different scenario.
With public health, I've created a micro-network between their laptops and a, uh, and a hard drive backup backing up their laptops. I have their last laptop in my office right now, um, finishing the installations and all that for them. Um, they will be entirely separate from the clinic. Up until this point, they have been entirely dependent upon the clinic and their internet speeds, which has really limited their ability to do any type of video conferencing and, um, really do their work effectively. At this point in time, at this stage of the game in the world, four megabytes is just not enough for anyone to do their, to do their job efficiently. So, in that process, I've actually created a cloud network, they can share documents back and forth wherever they go in the world, they are, they are a self-contained, public health is a self-contained entity now, operating off of our high-speed internet. Um, the process is just simply to connect them, I've worked with the, uh, worked with the clinic's, um, IT people, their server people, to make certain that we can get through their firewalls and they can communicate properly and that doesn't seem to be an issue now. Um, so, like I said, it should be done by the end of this week, into the clinic itself. Public health is, is operating autonomously right now.
Right.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Um, the service we're providing to the clinic, not to our-
Mm-hmm.
-is that gonna have any detrimental effect on the rest of the county?
It's not gonna drag our speeds down. Like I said, I've put a, I've put a speed limit on their, on their, on the, the leg going to them, so that they don't drag us down if they start using a bandwidth.
Throttle.
Right, exactly.
My conversation with Vernon was basically this, although we didn't talk about this particular thing I'm gonna mention, is that when we entered into a lease agreement with the clinic, it was with the understanding that, hey, you know, um, the clinic's providing heat, the office, the technology, the whatever, well, now they're not providing the technology. We're providing that ourselves. And in addition to that, providing ten times more capability than they had before. So I think eventually, I, I, I'm not in this big panic about, boy, if they're, if they're getting forty megs up and down, starting Monday, we need to, we need to negotiate and enter into a contract with them. I get it that they're, they're in the toilet right now as far as dealing with this, uh, company that has been brokering their internet service, but I think at some point in the near future, we probably need to have a conversation with the clinic and say, hey, let's reevaluate. If you have determined that there's value in the forty megs you're getting from the county, then let's talk about what that's worth to you. That's my thought.
Um, I wanna concur completely with you, but I just wanna throw out on the table, if, I just don't wanna forget, for the longest time, they allowed our public health nurse to stay in their clinic at no cost. So, helping them through this transition, I concur with you completely, I don't think we need to be, uh, hard with them. At some point, they need to carry their own weight, but I think that just certainly be after they're done with their contract and their issues are resolved, then we can sit down and talk it-
We also got them to pay their fair share on some other things, the SAR and stuff, when we have a new agreement.
But I just don't wanna-
They hadn't been paying on it.
I just don't wanna forget that they gave us-
With the clinic?
The radios, the radio communication, they, they weren't paying the-
Clinic weren't paying anything.
-upkeep of the, uh, the radio towers that they were using.
That's right.
But they did-
But now they are.
Yeah, they did work that out.
That's their share.
Yeah, they should have been paying, now they are.
Understand what you're saying, yes.
You got a question?
I just wonder at, uh, perhaps a conflict between the way you're interacting with the clinic and not doing the fire department a favor. Just an observation.
Okay. Good point. I think we fully intend to request, I think we intend, as commissioners, to request payment for the internet service we're providing them. I'm just saying, I don't think it has to be right today.
And I was concurrent with that.
But it's a good point.
Maybe after their, maybe after their contract expires, then a renegotiation at that point when they're in a better place and understand the actual benefits going on here.
Unless they got a better deal somewhere else.
You know, unless they ran fiber over there.
They'll have a danger from us.
Yes. There, there's al, there's always C-Com, but I get notifications every day about the, the difficulties of C-Coms, so. It's, it's a possibility.
Okay, good. Well, thank you for looking forward-thinking on the Justice Center. That will become a big question at some point, so, appreciate it. Anything else, sir?
Um, if you wanna leave your computer with me tomorrow after I can work on that, uh, sticky keys, so.
Perfect.
All right. Be well.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Yep.
What does the fire department have?
The fire department has, um, a CenturyLink DSL connection. I would have to do some, uh, research and see if I could beam over there.
But they got, uh, with their upgrade, I bet they got, find out.
I'll find out, I will definitely find out. Um, our, our shop, right next door to the, uh, to, uh, the fire department, um, we have a Hilltop Wireless and we have a C-Com D, uh, sorry, CenturyLink DSL, um, it's costing, that one costs us a hundred and thirty dollars a month and I don't know the cost of the Hilltop Wireless, they're pretty slow speed, it's not like I could send that over to the, uh, to the fire department effectively at all, so.
Thank you.
All right.
Appreciate it.
Be well.
Good morning, sir.
And what do you want here, huh?
Morning, Roger, how are you, sir?
Good to see you, sir.
Good to see you. How are you? Thank you for your patience, I know we're running, we're clearly behind schedule, we're gaining a little, but not fast enough, so, thank you. How are ya?
Good, doing well. Uh, I have to say that, uh, it's been a real pleasure so far to step in temporarily like this, a really, uh, rewarding experience for me to see so many veterans pour in that door and call on the phone so much. I think I had sixty contacts in February, which is far more than I expected. I thought in January, well, a little bit of backlog with Tim being out so much, but it's just kept right up. So, it looks like you guys have a real viable, uh, operation over there that someone's gonna be able to step into and just, uh, have, uh, have a clientele sitting there waiting for them, so, it's very nice to see.
They all interested in the new guy coming in?
They are, they are, lots of questions, lots of questions, uh, and, uh, I think that I've been, you know, telling them that we're gonna try to get someone younger than me in there and, uh, they all seem excited about having somebody who will stay, who will be around and, uh, they could, to count on seeing their face for a number of years. So there's, there's the, uh, report that we sent to the Colorado Division of Veterans Affairs, that's just a copy for you guys there. Um, and, uh, we, we, like I say, we've, we've really been impressed with the sheer number of people, so, uh, that'll make CDVA happy, too.
Well, thank you for what you have been doing on our behalf, we appreciate that, should we go without saying, but-
Yeah, it's, it's been very enjoyable. I wanted to also share with you that, um, really we've got, uh, three things besides that, that I wanted to share with you, you know, we've got that, that wall we're intending to put up over there, to separate that back part of the kitchen area from the, what is really now kind of a community meeting room. And, uh, I think that's gonna be a, a valuable addition, Tom, you and I have talked about that quite a bit. Uh, one of the things that is, well, in fact, today, this afternoon, uh, one of the psychotherapists from the Vet Center in Pueblo is coming up. I know this gentleman, known him for years, we, uh, Nick Beal and I have convinced him to come down to Werfino County on a regular basis. I'm trying to get the same thing done here. Uh, and if, in fact, we can, we can gain a sense of privacy, that space, that the room, that the wall is going to create, would provide John a place.
Nice, good, good, 'cause you could always close your office door.
Right, my door a little shut.
That would be nice, so we're gonna gain another conference room.
Right, right. So I, I think that would be a real good use of that space.
And, and can I interject here, sir, if you don't mind? Um, I just wanted to give the commissioners an update. I messed in that project for that wall, a door and a window sheet rocked on both sides, taped, finished and painted, probably around four hundred dollars. Uh, Jeremy Handy's given me a quote for a door, uh, it's just a hollow core Louis Vuitton door, nothing real fancy, but, uh, lock set on it. So I would like, uh, by consensus to know whether we should move forward on that. I didn't wanna do it without knowing the dollar figure, but-
How do we get, uh, the coroner in, out of there?
He'll be able to go through that same door.
Same door, so it could interrupt.
I think the only time that door would be locked would be as if there was something going on in it. Normally it would not be locked, it will be lockable, but-
Right, wouldn't be much cause for locking anything if, if he wasn't in session, and so.
Um, just out of curiosity, would this come out of building and maintenance?
Yes.
I think it's a great idea, um, I'm pleased and I, I, I wholeheartedly support this.
Yeah, then, I think it's fine.
Okay, good, so, we'll move forward with that, Chris. Uh, I talked to Chris about that, he says, I'm certainly not a carpenter, but I'd love to work with you and learn about that, so it'd be a good project for the two of us to work on, so I'll move forward with that. And I've spoken with Roger about the location of the door itself, we're gonna put the door kinda to the right-hand side and then that leaves a window space that he can have the visual-
Yeah, because you can see the front door if there's a window properly placed.
If we put the door in the middle, then it's gonna kick the window off over too far to the left. So we'll move forward with that and continue to-
Makes sense.
Move with that.
And, and then lastly, um, I think last month I spoke to you guys about, uh, or maybe it was just to you, Tom, uh, considering the, you know, seeing a couple of candidates, uh, we were originally gonna see them in February for the position and, uh, that didn't work out. I was a little, uh, disappointed that I wouldn't be able to take the guy to, uh, an upcoming training in Pueblo. Well, as luck would have it, that's been moved back.
No way, oh my gosh.
So now it is in April.
Oh, okay, so a good chance.
Yeah, I'll be going anyway, because that's just part of what I do in Werfino County as well.
Sure.
Whether I'm still involved with the new guy or not, so, but I can, I can certainly-
If you can keep us in the loop, make sure our new person gets there, that'd be huge.
Yeah, we'll do that and, uh, because it's real important, because this is about the biggest change in VA benefits management in decades, which is the, the AMA, the, uh, Appeals, uh, Modernization Act, uh, by Congress, that really alters, um, how one goes about making an appeal after your claim has been denied. So it's a big, for us, it's big stuff, so, it'd be real important for him to attend.
Great promotion. Uh, yes, I think so.
Okay, good. I'll go ahead and I'll move that. We accept the February two thousand nineteen Colorado Department of Military and Veteran Affairs, uh, County Veteran Service Office Monthly Report and Certification of Pay for Custer County.
I'll sign it.
We're gonna sign it, Don. And approve the, uh, February report for VSO discussion. Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose nay. Motion carries. I will sign that.
Any problem with the weather getting in and out of here?
I did on two occasions back in January.
Did it slow down then, custom base?
No, no, absolutely.
If I'm around here, they got to you anyway.
Most of them know how to get here, they've got vehicles that can do it, so. I had a couple of elderly, uh, widows or spouses who had to postpone, but other than that, it was fine.
Anything else, sir? Question?
When are you interviewing?
Tomorrow. Yep, sixth, one, one o'clock, one to three. And then we are actually gonna have a meeting, commissioner meeting tomorrow afternoon at three, and we will-
It's on the calendar.
-make a selection of a new VSO officer. That's the plan.
And, and one in the morning?
We're having one in the morning, yes. Regular BLCC in the morning and then we're having-
We're doing afternoon, uh, interviews.
And then a special meeting after?
To select-
Will that be recorded?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, the only item, uh, agenda item on that, agenda is the hiring of a new VSO officer. All right, sir, thank you, appreciate it, always good to see you.
Good to see you, guys, for a great time.
Thanks, Roger.
Have a great day, thank you for your patience, I know-
Not a problem.
Got other things to be doing besides sitting in here, take care, have a good day.
Sorry, this is my bed.
It's okay. Pardon? Were you on the phone upstairs?
Yeah, I'm trying to call.
Think that's her running around up there?
Probably.
You're running down the stairs.
There's some stomping going on, wonder?
Dancing lessons?
I was afraid a couple people might have come in to visit her this morning.
At first I thought it was kids, but it sounded heavier than kids.
I'm ruling out Charlie French, though, as fast as-
Are you calling into, for an extension? It's one-two-six, but is that only up to us?
Uh, no, you press the, when you pick it up, there's a light on the right, uh, press that and then one-two-six.
What? Thanks. Am I in trouble?
No. I want you to be, but you're not.
Hey, we're ready for you.
You should be in trouble, but you're not.
Well, I'm normally in trouble, so.
I don't like having my heat beat hell to the fire and have to be accountable.
Well, darn, I told ya.
I know you did. I know you did.
Uh, and while we are, come, come forward, ma'am, how are you? Good morning.
Good morning.
Good to see you.
Gwynnavir, nice to see you. Thank you for coming down. Appreciate it. I know we're behind schedule, so I apologize.
It's nice to have the phone call.
Yeah, yeah. Then you can continue to work. Yeah. However, want to formally lodge a complaint? A lot of stomping going on up in your area this morning.
I'm full of excitement.
Okay, all right.
Meredith says every day.
We got a big chuckle out of that. So how are you?
Pretty good.
Good, good, good. Did I communicate to you that we put the appointment on an agenda?
I looked at the agenda this morning, so yeah.
Thank you. Couldn't remember if I did that or not.
It's okay.
So, what's up?
So tomorrow I have to go to county area director training, so thanks for taking me today. I couldn't make it tomorrow. So this is just my monthly update, what I'm up to. Really just trying to work on getting towards fair. 4H is a big, where I spend most of my time these days. But also it's, I need an advisory board, so that's kind of what you'll make, take action on later. But so that's what I presented before you is just, I'd like to get going. We still don't have all the roles filled. But I just found a copy of the old minutes and so the bylaws might shift. And so that we may have less vacancies, more, I don't know, just depending on what the board that is willing to move forward says, so.
That's on our agenda for tomorrow, correct, Meredith? Consideration of the Extension Advisory Committee members?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
It's on today.
It was on today, okay. I just didn't, I just didn't go look, so. I thought I had a copy of your bylaws for that here, but maybe...
Consideration. I have the boys appointments.
Revised May of 2018, you're aware of those?
Yep, yeah, yeah. But in the minutes, there was mention of getting rid of the student. And, but they were still in the bylaws, so... So we'll see how that works, yeah.
So your recommendations stand?
Yes.
Five people, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Unless you, anyone else in the room? I kept trying to get Meredith. She said no.
Okay, good. And would Mr. Evans as the ag teacher be an ex officio non-voting member?
No, he just is the FFA advisor. So that's just a seat that whoever is in that occupies.
Voting or non?
Voting.
Oh, wow, okay.
At least that's my question.
Question why is Kyle Evans have no expiration date?
He is the FFA teacher, so his term is as long as he's a teacher.
Long as he waits. Okay, didn't get that.
Yeah. No, that's okay. That is confusing.
Yeah, and I wonder if maybe better wording might be term to run concurrent with his employment. Because somebody may look and go, hmm, wonder why.
That's why I asked. I mean, I dawned on that he is the teacher. It just didn't put those two together as quickly as I...
Yeah, shouldn't have a problem.
That's right. I work in my head most of the time. I'm like, I know what I'm talking about.
Anything else?
Nope, that's really it.
Meat Quality Assurance tonight, two-hour meeting.
5 to 7. But we'll probably be there at 3:00 to whatever, yeah.
And is that the Saddle Club building?
Yeah. Do they have water yet?
Uh, they can have. All they got to do is turn it on.
Oh, okay.
So as far as I know, it's currently shut off.
Okay, I'll call over there.
Do you have George Coon's information?
Yes, indeed.
Yeah, they could turn that on for your meeting. Turn it off later tonight or tomorrow morning. But my understanding is it's off, so why we're not having our meeting there tonight because you guys are.
Thank you.
So we're going to Bull Domingo. Yeah, I had a family ask me why the quality meat assurance meeting is two hours long.
Uh, so it's a training essentially. How do you do all this stuff for the care of your animals?
And all that, so...
Yeah. And so they get test, like they get introduced to the material and then tested on it, so...
So it's all done today, so they can be certified. So Meat Quality Assurance, really the program is, in a nutshell, is to teach and train young people how to handle their animals to assure a high-quality meat product. And primarily tied to injection sites. In the old days, everybody gave shots to pigs and the hams. And then when you process the pig, now you have a black spot on that ham for the rest of its life typically. And so now they do a lot of shots in the neck and places like that. So that's really kind of in a nutshell what that's, not just about the injection sites, but that's a big one. Misuse or mishandling of animals can also affect quality of the meat.
Doesn't involve the feeding either?
You know, I'm not really sure. Part of this is for me to learn as well how to run it next year. So 4H has a trailer that they bring up and next year I can just run the whole thing. So I can answer it tomorrow.
Yeah, because I have a meeting obviously at the same time, I thought it will not be there.
And so it's also for the FFA kids as well, so it's a joint effort there.
Yeah, a family was a little concerned about starting that close to the end of a working person's day and going through the dinner hour and...
Yeah.
And I thought, yeah, two hours does seem like a long time, but if they're going to get certified too, all at once, why?
Yeah, yeah.
Good. And that's, I think, by state fair rules, you, they don't have a choice. They have to go through this mandatory, so...
Yeah. And I think that was one of the times and dates that was available, so that has something to do with it.
Very good. Well, excellent.
So you think Kelly will be a decent member?
I think so.
Think she can handle it?
Yeah. Seems like she's got some knowledge on that front.
You're not going to let her vote, are you? Because I would be, owe you a home.
I need some advice.
Very good. All right. Well, thank you, ma'am. Appreciate it.
So you guys will vote later or?
Yes.
Okay.
We get into the agenda.
Yeah, which is coming up very quickly, so if you have another three or four minutes.
Yes.
The treaty, okay?
Yes, yes. Nope, just, you know, laying down the law when I need to.
Good, good, good. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, we'll move on. Unfinished business, gentlemen? I have none.
I don't have any, sir.
Mr. Canada?
None here.
Okay, move on, new business. Allow public comment on any action items. Discussion on the grant writing for Custer County as an entity. Thank you, Commissioner Prince, for providing that document. Given us some direction and guideline on primarily really using our BOHC administrative assistant. Jackie, you want a copy of this?
Sure.
Document to help other entities tied to the county, correct?
Right. I just wanted to make sure that, I was a little concerned that our administrative assistant, because of her expertise, might be inundated without, I thought we need to help control that and make some procedures as to when and where will last-minute things. We're going to go, sorry, you waited too long. It's your problem. Those kind of problems were the things I tried to address.
Just a question, Jay, is how do, how do we work with the CCED Inc. guys? Because usually they're pushing projects and they, they also have the ability to write grants and help us, right? Do, do we coordinate them?
Absolutely.
So it's not just, we only have one, we got more than one grant writer?
We have lots of grant writers, but I was concerned about our grant.
That's right. Because that, first, we got to make sure we're getting everybody else involved.
And I even put in here that if an organization wants to do their own grant outside of us, we encourage you to do that.
It's a good point. I hadn't thought about that. Because you make reference to assist county organizations. So then that begs the question is what would be a county organization? Would the Economic Development Company be one?
See, they qualify.
I don't think they are, but I think they write and attempt to get grants on our behalf.
They're always coming up with things for us to do. And we got to make sure they provide people as well, that when they do, that's what not abuse them.
This is just a road map. We can change anything you want. It was just a starting point for discussion.
I would ask council, maybe, could we loosely adopt this as guidelines? I don't, I don't think we need...
Sort of an administrative process that we have as a board?
Ordinances and resolutions, but...
This is our process of doing business, just operating as a board.
Sure, it doesn't have to be a, some sort of formal vote on anything. If this, this looks like what you want, just use it.
We ought to put it on a bulletin board somewhere. Yeah, put it on the website.
Well, I would move we adopt these guidelines for our administrative assistant when it comes to grant writing.
I'll second it.
Moving to second to adopt the guidelines, I guess you're okay with that, sir, that language? To give us some direction on utilizing our administrative assistant as a grant writer. Just further discussion? You okay with that?
Yeah, I just wanted to make it a point that, and I know it says it in the document, which I appreciate, is that the grant writing for other entities will not take precedence over the actual day-to-day.
Right.
Because I left Donna kind of hanging on this payroll, there's some things that not fell through the cracks, but were rushed because I wasn't able to be a help to that 50-50 math that we have.
And that was one of the concerns we had.
Yeah, and it was. And I stayed up all night Thursday writing the landfill grant to make sure it was done. So I just want to make sure that that was a...
Yeah, and I, I guess it is kind of a control thing. I would hope that if somebody comes to you and says, man, we need you to help us write this grant, I would hope your immediate response is you need to take that to the commissioners. I cannot answer that. I'm not trying to run your life, but in a way we want to...
That also gives me...
Insulate you. Yes, exactly.
You can use a...
And I would guess the commissioners are going to come right back and say, well, before we vote on this or before they make a decision, we're going to ask you for your input. And you have to be honest and say, you know what, you guys, I don't have time. It doesn't, it's not a knock against the organization or their cause or whatever. It's just, I can't do it. I've got other responsibilities, I should...
And then we'll prioritize for you.
And then we'll go from there.
You know, because it could be that you need the help. Who knows? It would have to be a decision we have.
Yeah, I think another point, in all of grant reign, it's, it's important for someone who's actually writing the grant to be involved in that arena. And so I, so that time that I have to spend researching and figuring out the words or the lingo for that one section is time that I could be spent something else. Or so that person who's in the arena needs to write up a narrative, the, the big idea of that grant. Then I can add in the things, but it's hard for someone who's not in that arena to try and paint this big picture, which is what's needed for grants when...
Once the...
I, I don't know what that is.
Right. I tried to incorporate that into here. I recognize it is an issue.
And I don't believe anywhere in your job title is incorporated grant writing. You're an administrative assistant to the board. You're not a grant writer for the county. So I think that that's part of the spirit of this, that we, we have your time blocked out, half here and half with Ms. Donna, so...
So is, does this primarily affect county departments? Or are we talking about like childhood development or, you know, the, the outside agencies? Because outside agencies, if they're writing grants and they can get a free grant writer...
Right. Jump all over that.
Oh, yeah. Because they normally pay for it.
That's when it would, would be here. And a lot of those grants, the county is the fiscal agent because they won't do it for that organization. But really that was all the commissioners ever signed on for was to, to put their name to it, to let it pass through, not...
But not to write the grant.
Yeah, absolutely.
Because that could get, that could get out of hand real fast.
Which it already has. The whole purpose of this is so that we don't allow it to get out of hand.
Up all night? That's not right.
Yeah. And both these grants were, they just weren't good, the airport and the landfill. They came at the last minute and...
But she was a rock star.
Yeah, so... Further discussion? Public comment. Hearing none will proceed to vote. All in favor of adopting the guidelines for an administrative assistant in the grant writing area, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose nay. Motion carries. So we will post that and we can ask Vernon to stick that on the website as well. Maybe we can consider it a living document and revisit it if we need to and kind of go from there. But a great, great stab at it, sir. Thank you for doing that. Appreciate it.
Only thing I would, you might want to tweak is, you know, sometimes there, there's going to have to be a decision made whether she prioritize, how to prioritize things. Right? What we stayed here is, and I should have brought this up sooner, but, you know, it won't be tolerated. It's a sole responsibility of the organization. And if it's something that, for whatever the reason was, is out of their control, that it came, now we do, we decide to ignore it and then lose the grant or not. Somebody asked me that.
I thought that was, I tried to make that clear at the very beginning. At the top, it says, it comes to us, we decide whether we're going to pursue it or not. That's kind of how I felt.
You need this?
Because I agree with you. It's just a million-dollar grant, maybe tomorrow.
No mind, she needs a copy. Okay, good. Thank you. Appreciate your work on that, sir. Thanks for taking the lead. Consideration of the MOU with the Wet Mountain Valley Saddle Club. Provided a copy of said MOU. I've also got a hard copy here. I would move that we enter into an MOU with Custer County and the Wet Mountain Valley Saddle Club pertaining to the repayment schedule of the outstanding water bill.
I second it.
Moving to second it, enter into an MOU with Wet Mountain Valley Saddle Club in the county. Discussion. Thank you, sir. I hammered out what I thought was the framework and then sent it to counselor and Smith and asked him to go through that and revise. I thought he did a great job. It was exactly what I thought we needed and I certainly wasn't capable of writing all that, so...
You had it all. I just switched a few words around and charged you an enormous amount of money.
Nice, thank you.
That's where those whereas...
Yeah.
Each whereas was a thousand bucks, I think.
He, he's not telling the whole truth there. Believe me, I gave him a pretty rough document. So thank you for doing that, sir. Appreciate it. Any other questions or concerns, gentlemen? Hearing none, is there any public comment? Hearing none will proceed to vote. All in favor of entering in an MOU with the Wet Mountain Valley Saddle Club in the county, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose nay. Motion carries. I will carry this document to their board meeting tonight, of which I will be attending. I don't know that we'll get action on it, but at least I can give it to them and they can consider it. Hopefully they'll do it tonight. That's kind of why I did it today instead of tomorrow. So I will take that with, thank you. And the next item of the agenda is consideration of the Extension Advisory Board appointments. Ms. Gwynnavir had provided those to us in her board packet report, so...
Can I move we accept the nominated members for the Extension Advisory Board as presented with Janet Freeburg and Kelly Camper expiring year 2022, January? And the other three expiring 1/20. That would be Jordan Hedberg, Kyle Evans and Mary Gump. And Kyle Evans has no expiration.
Right, okay, thank you. One clarification there.
Because he's the egg.
Moving to second it to recommend the, or to approve the recommendations for membership on the Extension Advisory Committee to include Janet Freeburg, Kelly Camper, Jordan Hedberg, Kyle Evans and Mary Gump and their stated terms of expiration, which Commissioner Canada just clarified. Discussion. And are you guys have a meeting scheduled now?
Yes, for the 12th.
Okay, and that is going to be downstairs?
Yep.
Another point that I'd like to make is certainly was not anybody's intent or desire to meet downstairs in the basement, but we don't have much choice. We're running...
Out of space.
We just don't have space. So what time is that?
10:00 AM.
Oh, at 10:00, okay.
At what time?
10:00 AM.
When, what day?
12th.
12th, yeah. 12 March.
Please are welcome to come.
Yeah. Some of us would be in the tourism board, but I'll probably try to slip down there, so... Yeah, I mean, we, Gwynnavir and I talked about it. there, so, uh, yeah, I mean, we, Gwynnavere and I talked about it, there, it's not our desire to have public meetings down there in that basement, and we just don't have much choice, and Tuesday happens to be VSO day, so I didn't feel like we should be having it over there. Lynn Rogers is trying to conduct business at the VSO annex, so if you get some grumbling about a meeting being held in the basement, that's why it was, you know, choice. Someday, maybe that will not be the case, but...
I can look for other places in the future.
Yeah, um, personally, if, if you're not having during the day, that ag classroom is a great place to have a meeting like that, they have plenty of room, but...
We used to meet in here.
Did they?
But it was in the evening, so...
Yeah, yeah. Further discussion?
We all get this feeling right.
Public comment? Hearing none will proceed to vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose nay. Motion carries. Thank you for bringing those names to us. We appreciate your work there. It's hard, being new, to go out and try to contact people, so I really appreciate your efforts there, but, um, good luck with Mrs. Camper. It could go downhill at any given moment, you never know.
Oh, come on, she's awesome.
All right.
She just doesn't know me yet.
That's right, thank you. Appreciate it. Uh, one quick question, gentlemen? Do you, would you support the request to have Cindy Howard come and give us a EMS report as staff? I don't need an answer necessarily, I'm just throwing it out for us to think about. I just have a hard time keeping track of what really is going on, where we're at with the grants and this and that. She talks about some of that at CES, but...
Well, that's separate, that's why, but something to think about.
I mean, she reports to us directly.
I believe we used to do that.
I was going to say, I always thought she did do that.
Yeah, where has she been now?
Well, that's fine, well, that's, you know, I would support that, I would like to know what's going on.
If you, if you was, I'd call doctor.
Yeah, let her do it.
A lot of stuff going on there.
Yeah, I'm, I, right now, I, I'm guilty of kind of just getting my information whenever I bump into her, if I got a quick question, I'll send it to her, but I think as, as someone who reports directly to the commissioners, I think she should report.
Oh, she should.
Are you thinking of getting her as a regular monthly item?
Yes, yes.
EMS?
Yes.
I think it's a great idea.
What do you think, Kel? You had history in there?
She was always on there. I don't understand why she's not there.
Yeah, that's why I kind of looked at you, I go...
She's always, she always comes in every month, don't you?
She always did for a long time.
She did, she was, she was coming.
I'm just saying, she isn't now.
I hadn't seen her since.
She hasn't for a couple months.